In the next meeting, we have special recognitions. And for me, this is the highlight of the year, especially as a board member. We work hard all year long, and to come to June each and every year that I've been on the Board, this is a special night. We recognize our tenure candidates, we recognize our top ten students, we recognize our retirees, and we recognize our top two students, our alocutori and our seducer. So for me, it's a special night, and I hope everyone enjoys the evening. We'll have a short break after we recognize all the special individuals tonight. We'll meet again tomorrow in the presidential meeting. So in order to do that, we have to take some personnel issues first, and we'll do recommendations for tenure. So for our tenure candidates, you and the Board of Education, based upon the recommendations to contend, choose following individuals for the tenure status. Everyone will take a block. Should we do them?
Yeah, we'll pop you now. They're all pretty much special.
Okay, so we'll take them out of state blocks one through five. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Heather. Discussion?
I want to thank these individuals for their dedication and hard work, and I look forward to a very long career with them here in Highland.
Do we want to bring them up after?
Yes.
What I would like to say is, and I've said this probably each and every year I've sat here as President, that recognizing tenure for our individuals is a big investment, it's almost a million-dollar investment, that the district makes these individuals. And we're very proud of that, and we hope that they remain in with this district and work with the school district, and essentially the school district. I have to say, over my years here, that this is an amazing school district. We accomplish a lot here. We have talented individuals, talented staff members, talented administrators that work hard for each and every one of us, and for the children of Highland Central School District. That would be my comment. Anyone else?
Just wanted to thank these individuals for their dedication over whatever period of time we had, their tenure period was, or probationary period was, and we say it's just a date, but it's really not. What this is, is an improved relationship between the employee and the district they serve, so thank you very much.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, Joe Carey.
At this time, Mr. Baron Warren, we're gonna have some special recognition for personnel. So as we get to each category, if you, those people, you're gonna love this part, if you please come to the stage to be recognized. And when you do come to the stage, please be careful, the best way to enter is on this side.
So our tenure candidates should come to the stage.
So to the tenure candidates, I'm sure this sounds clean shape, but this is a very important milestone. Everyone remembers when they got tenure. I remember a very long time ago, when I got tenure, you never forget it. And as we already said, we look forward to a very long illustrious career here in Highland. And as we just said, this perhaps is a first, that all the tenure candidates are with Mr. Freer, they're under Mr. Freer's supervision, so I'm gonna pass the podium over to Principal Joel Freer.
I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Baron said. This is one of the best evenings of the school year, where we recognize our students and our tenure candidates and retirees. I'm very fortunate to have these five ladies behind me, working in our school district, and working so hard on behalf of our students. So I'm gonna say a little bit about each one, and hopefully you'll get to see why we believe that they are top-quality candidates for tenure. First, Kate Turner. Kate is a teaching assistant who's worked in our district for four years. She is one of the most flexible people that you will ever meet. She's worked in just about every grade level, with general ed and special education students. She can often be called upon to fill in for a teacher when a teacher needs to leave the classroom for any purpose. She's been a member of our Sunshine Committee, and she goes above and beyond and chaperones many of our school instrumental and choral events that are usually held here at the high school. So I wanna thank Kate for all of her dedicated service, and congratulate her on a job well done. Okay, our next candidate comes to us from the People Personnel Department. Alyssa Dialto joined our district four years ago. Before coming to Highland, she worked at the Anderson Center for Autism, over in St. Asperg. I'm gonna talk a little bit about each of the teacher candidates and the depth of their college degrees. Alyssa has a Bachelor of Science degree in Psychology from Maris College, a Master's of Science in Speech and Language Pathology from SUNY New Paltz, and she has supervised already for us and for the college some observers in the speech department there, so thank you, Alyssa, for that. Her knowledge and ability to diagnose issues early has been extremely helpful, especially at our annual kindergarten screening, which we do every spring. She's been an integral member of our IST and our CSE, those are our support networks that are in our schools for our children, and she always speaks to data and helps the decision-making process with the data that she brings forward. She thinks beyond traditional approaches and works with all students, no matter what their need, when it comes to language acquisition. She's been a member of our PBIS team, she's helped out with Special Olympics a couple years ago, I think it's two now. I got the opportunity to work with her one evening at the Tin Tepo Foundation Night to Shine event, which was pretty awesome. A few years ago, she was part of a committee that put together a pack of resources for parents, who needed outside supports and early interventions for their students. She's an integral part of our speech department, and we are so fortunate to have her, Alyssa Dialto. Our next tenure candidate, and this always makes me happy when, you know, sometimes districts will try to peel off some of our talent, but we were able to peel some talent from another district with this next candidate. She came to us, she was in the Hyde Park School District, and she was a tenured kindergarten teacher in the Millbrook School District. We were very fortunate to find her a few years ago, Holly Schindler. She started with us in third grade, and now she's a kindergarten teacher. She has a Bachelor's of Science in Elementary Education from the SUNY New Paltz campus. Also, she holds certification in birth to two, elementary education and literacy, birth through six, from SUNY New Paltz. Holly has been wonderful in all areas of our school. She started with us, as I said, in third grade, and when that kindergarten position became available, she went back to the grade that she loved so much. She, just in her few years here in the district, has already worked very closely with our Bosse's liaison, with our Teachers College rollout. She hosted a lab site in her classroom where teachers came to see how she was putting the project-based learning together for our kindergarten students. She's attended workshops on project-based learning and inquiry series with Silver and Strong. She works very close with all of her grade levels, or her grade-level colleagues in kindergarten, with a centers-based approach in her classroom, and she's attended workshops on the understanding of the next-generation learning standards and project-based learning. She too has gotten very much involved in our district, a member of our PBIS team, our Guest Services Team, the CLINK program, and I'm told, but I unfortunately missed that event, she was during her first year part of the Faculty versus Harlem Wizards team. So, Mrs. Schindler, thank you so much. Mrs. Schindler will be with us in the fall, unfortunately, because she is expecting another child, so congratulations to her. Boy, it took a long time to interview all of you and get you all hired that one summer. It's a long time to recognize your tenure, but it's a great night, isn't it? Our next candidate comes to us from our Special Education Department. Mrs. Megan Carey started with us, actually, five years ago. She took a short leave to have her own child as well. So she started as a leave replacement in a self-contained 12-1-1 classroom, remained there for a few years, and now works in our inclusion program. This year, she's worked in two of our inclusion programs in the remote setting. She holds a fine arts degree in art history from CW Post Long Island University, a Master's degree in childhood and special education from Mount St. Mary College. She also holds certification in childhood one through six, students with disabilities one through six, and completed her coursework for early childhood, birth to two. She was implementing the Teachers College Reading Program when she arrived to us, and continues to do that with our teachers here in Highland. She has attended many workshops, including the ones from Jen Saravello, one of the leading authors in writing strategies that go along with the Teachers College Reading and Writing Program, and she's an active member of the Teachers College Social Media Group online, bringing new ideas to our school district every day. This summer, she'll be attending a week-long instituted Teachers College Columbia University. Thank you for doing that. She incorporates hands-on learning and visuals and technology-based practices in her daily work. She works in a classroom where they blend the math curriculum with technology, and work very closely with our Ulster Bosse's colleagues to make sure that that is implemented well for our second-grade students. She applied, one of the first teachers applies for a grant for the Reflex Math Program, which we are now using throughout our district, or excuse me, throughout our school. She applied for that two years ago, when she was in a self-contained classroom. Is my time up? I have a lot to say. She is very articulate, and she knows the needs of her special education students and brings those needs to the forefront at the CSE meetings. She also has been involved in our PBIS team, the CLINK program, our Highland Elementary School Guarding Club, and has helped with many food drives, the Backpack Program, the list goes on. She also organized the Kind Cotton fundraiser a few years ago. This year, she's been an integral part of our school-wide equity initiative, and she also attends our Special Education Cabinet with the People Personnel Department. I could speak forever, but I will just say thank you, and congratulations to Mrs. Carey. Not really sure how Joanna Aegis, that's the end of the alphabet, it's probably the first time in your life that you've been at the end of the alphabet with a last name starting with A. Joanna Aegis, I remember when Mr. Boyd and I found her on a late summer day. We met with her, interviewed her in our old tiny little office in the old part of the building, and we knew instantly she was the candidate for us. We actually ran to the parking lot, it's very few times that that happens, we ran to the parking lot to ask her if she would accept the job. Mrs. Aegis comes to us with a Human Resource Management degree from SUNY Oswego, a Master's degree in childhood education, special education from Mercy College. She also holds early childhood education, birth to two, students with disabilities, birth to two, childhood education one through six, students with disabilities, one to six, and she's also permanently certified in the state of New Jersey, general ed K to five, and special education, birth to twenty-one. She's a very multi-talented individual. She works with some of our most extreme needs learners in our 12-1-1 K through two program, and she reaches them every single day. We couldn't be more proud of the work she does, trying to implement the Teachers College Reading and Writing with some students that have come to her with no literacy background to start with. She's also gotten many of those children to work with math manipulatives and work with them in a functional way. She has gone to many workshops, but just to name a few, teaching reading to atypical learners, and creating a trauma-sensitive classroom for special education students. She's also attended, most recently, a mathematics workshop on struggling learners and the use of hands-on materials. And as I said, some of these children come with very little knowledge in reading and math, and she gets them so, so far, and you're so proud of the work that she does. She's also been a part of our PBIS team, Guest Services Team, our CLINK program, annual food drives. She volunteers also in her own community with Thanksgiving food baskets. Mrs. Aegis is one of a kind, and we are so fortunate to have her, so thank you and congratulations.
Thank you again, Mr. Freer, and again, congratulations to all our tenure recipients. Not every school district has student representatives. I've been on the school districts, I've been on the school districts' board meetings, and it's a very important role that both of you serve. You serve as liaisons between the student body and the Board of Education. And for most students, and believe me, for most adults, the board meeting is probably about the last place most people wanna spend the Tuesday night. We usually only have about one or two people in the audience. So I appreciate, and we appreciate, on behalf of the Board of Education, Highland Central School District, your dedication and giving of your time to the district. Just sharing up ideas from the students has really helped the Board make decisions, especially this school year, where it was unlike any other. Your input was invaluable. So I just wanted to get the information, so Farah, next year, as she graduates, probably going to Boston University to be a history major, so Mrs. Dufflemer and myself are very happy about, like the leader here. Jake will be attending Clarkson's, studying mechanical engineering. Fantastic. So just as a small token of appreciation, we do have some certificates for you. So at this time, if all of the retirees who are here could come up to the stage, along with their supervisor, or director, or principal. Not all of our retirees could make it here tonight, perhaps they've already been to Florida, but we have with us here, and we'll say a few words of all of them in just a moment, so we have Dan Wetzel, eleven years of service to Highland. Darcy LaFever, eighteen years. And Linda Calvo, fifteen years of service. So I know that certainly on behalf of the Board of Education, the Highland Central School District, we thank all of you and all those retirees who couldn't be here for your service to the students, the community of the Highland Central School District. There is no better, no more rewarding profession than being in education and shaping students' lives, and to do it for a career is just, it's amazing what you give, and you really, you get back so much also, I know that. So as far as Dan Wetzel, I think maybe it's just, I don't know, I gotta say a few words. So Dan, we weren't sure if we'd be able to find you, okay? Welcome back, because Dan really retired last year, right? If I was asked, you know, Mr. B., what is your opinion, what is the most important trait that a teacher, principal, anyone working in education should have? And there's a lot of traits, but the number one trait, if I had to pick one, it would certainly be someone who cares about children, who loves children. That's Dan Wetzel. Dan Wetzel cares, he loves children, and they show it every day during his principalship and his time here in Highland. So I know he has been enjoying retirement immensely, and I just wanna personally, once again, thank him for his service to the Highland Central School District.
I'd like to say a few things about Dan as well. He was the assistant principal, or he was a principal, sorry, at the middle school when I first started, assistant superintendent, and I certainly echo every word that Mr. Bon Jovi said, but another thing that I always loved about working with Dan is he was always willing to try something new. Anything, any conference we went to, or idea he had, or we had together, he was like, "Okay, how are we gonna get this done?", and he would jump right on doing that. And I think that's something that's often overlooked in the world of education, that willingness to shift and change, be flexible, was very important to who we are in Highland. So combining that with caring about kids, he really created a great environment at the middle school. So thank you, Dan, I hope that, I hope that you enjoy every moment of your retirement, but also thank you for what you gave to Highland.
Here to speak on Darcy is, once again, Principal Joel Freer.
Wow, it's been a quick, quick time for Darcy here. She's, it seems like yesterday she joined the district, I was at the middle school when she first started here, and that was more years than I'd like to remember, I guess. It went by so, so fast. Darcy has had such an impact on so many children's lives. Darcy works in our occupational therapy department, and helps children with all of those modalities, the using of their fingers, and to watch Darcy work with a kindergartner who can't hold a pencil when they first start out, but then she gets them a finger grip, she gets them the putty, and they pull toys out of the putty, but it's not easy to do. I remember sitting in an observation, and a little guy said to me, "You try it, Mr. Freer", and I tried it. The toy didn't come out of the putty as easily as I thought it would. These are some of the things that she uses to try to build strength in children's fingers, and she has built a lot of muscle over the years. I think, I don't think I like that, built muscle in the children's fingers and in their minds. She's gotten them to think, and she's gotten them to persevere. Congratulations, Darcy, we're gonna miss you.
Now, I'd said during an in-service this school year when I spoke with the Transportation Department, and this holds true for everyone here in the school district, I said that every employee is the most important employee, because everyone, no matter what your role, plays an important part of the entire school district. So when I said to the drivers, you know, "You are the first person that our students see in the morning, and you're the last person they see in the afternoon", so they are, in their way, the most important employee in the district. And really, out there driving, but also really the one who keeps them all organized and going in the right places, is Linda Calvo. She is just a human atlas. You can name, I can pick out any student here, probably in this auditorium, she could tell me what street they live on, what the pro street is, and exactly how to get there. It's amazing. So here to speak on behalf of Linda Calvo is Kathy McCullough.
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations to our retirees and everybody else who's forgotten words tonight. And just to echo, Mr. Bon Jovi has said, yes, she is a human atlas. I've been working with Linda for four years now, and she took me around the district and could tell me not only every street, but every house of the child, their grandparents, their husband, their relative, and could tell me who she drove, and now she's telling me who children that have graduated, and she's preparing them for kindergarten. Linda has been an asset to me in the last four years, as well as for the Highland Heights, and I'm very proud of her, and I've learned a lot from her as well. group, and I'm very proud of her, and I've learned a lot from her as well, and we're truly going to miss Linda. So congratulations, Linda, I'm very proud of you.
Thanks again to all our retirees. If I could invite Carol Premi Veroli to the stage, we're going to be discussing and handing out the Distinguished Trend of Education Award. Each year, the Ulster County School Boards Association hosts an annual dinner where they recognize the contributions of key individuals in each school community in Ulster County. That dinner was traditionally held in May. Now, of course, this award was announced and was supposed to have been given out last May, but then, of course, because of circumstances, here we are. Each honoree will receive their recognition, of course, in their school districts, and on behalf of the Ulster County School Boards Association and Dr. Corey, the Ulster Bosse Superintendent, certainly, they congratulate you. Now we get to Carol, that's just the introduction. It was. Carol began serving Highland schools when she became the driving force behind organizing the annual Elementary School Field Day. And as we gently move through the various grade levels, so did Carol. She became a founding member of the Highland Educational Foundation, which organizes the now-famous Snowball Fundraising Dance. Since its formation, the Ed Foundation has raised tens of thousands of dollars to support programs and initiatives of the Highland Central School District. Carol and the Foundation have been a part of numerous special projects, including teacher grants and the Agricultural Learning Center. They have made vital purchases, including equipment for an adaptive playground, robotics equipment, and a 3D printer, library makerspace furniture, and choral whizers. The Ed Foundation also sponsored a student to attend SUNY Ulster as part of the SUNY Ulsters President's Challenge. And I can attest, as soon as I came to Highland and started meeting with the Ed Foundation, we have a great core group, but certainly Carol is the driving force who gets things done. If you need something done, you ask Carol, and it's going to get done, believe me. For these reasons, Carol was a clear choice for this award. Her passion, her true love and respect of education, and her dedication to the children helped make Highland Central School District the best district in Ulster County and province of state. So thank you very much, Carol, for everything you've done for Highland. And stay tuned for this fall, we're going to have the Alumni Hall of Fame induction ceremony, and then next January, we're going to be back in person at Novella's for a Snowball. At this time, I'd like to bring up Principal Bill Zimmer and Assistant Lieutenant Kevin Murphy to include, and including the top ten. Please come on up, have a seat, five to five. So I know this is, I'm not going to steal any of this thunder, but things certainly roll where it's been a very difficult over a year. You know, very sorry, you know, this is not what I just wanted as far as the situation we've gone through, but despite all that, you rose above difficult circumstances and still achieved great academic success. So congratulations, and I'm going to hand the mic over to Mr. Zimmer.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bon Jovi. Good evening, everyone. I am honored to be here to announce the top ten students of the class of 2021. We all know that a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication goes into achieving such a distinction as this. Congratulations to each of the top ten students and their families. Number ten plans to attend Siena College, where he will major in French. Number ten is Simon Meisel. Number nine has committed to attending Quinny Piak College, where she will major in Film. Later, she plans to go for a Master's Degree in Cinematic Production Management. Jordan Fettone Ingenio. Number eight plans to study Psychology with a concentration in Forensic Psychology at SUNY Binghamton. Number eight is Melanie Childs. Number seven will be attending SUNY Binghamton, majoring in Biology, Adriana Scalo. Number six will begin her pursuit of becoming a lawyer.